I'd like to call to order the December 11th, 2023 city council meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk Deaton, would the roll call show that Councilmember Moser is with us this evening? Motion to excuse Councilmember Moser?
I'll motion to excuse.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to approval of the minutes for November 27th, 2023. Councilmember Kibble?
I have a correction on five, a couple of words I had given or... Word palpable was in there and it should have been palatable and different, should have been difficult.
Mayor?
With that, I'll make the motion that we approve the minutes as amended.
Councilmember Dill?
I actually have one more. No, I can't find it, but it said, I think there was just a mistake on a motion. It said that Mayor Kennedy made the motion for me to be Mayor Pro Tem, but it was actually Alex that did that.
Okay, so looking for a motion to approve the minutes as amended. I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made.
In a second?
In a second. Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to approval of the bills. Councilmember Kibble?
I will make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second.
Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Moving on to approval of the agenda for this evening.
I'll move the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Moving on to the consent agenda, and on the consent agenda this evening, we have the resignation of Tracy Smith from the DDA board. Councilmember Kurtzweil?
Thank you. Move to present the consent agenda as presented by the mayor.
Second. Motion is second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you very much. So this evening, we have a special occasion. We are going to have a proclamation for the South Lyon First United Methodist Church this evening to recognize their service to the residents in our community. Forget everybody up here. We got quite a crowd. Did you leave them in the church? They're all here. This is great. So whereas 2023 marks a milestone for the South Lyon First United Methodist Church, celebrating their 190th year in the city of South Lyon, and whereas the South Lyon First United Methodist Church has been a welcoming and affirming congregation since its humble beginning in 1833, when 20 people first met to hear a sermon from a Methodist Episcopal minister, and whereas the congregation has grown over the years from its modest beginnings to almost 650 members, and whereas the South Lyon First United Methodist Church has been and continues to be an important, caring, and supportive part of the community, contributing to the spiritual and physical health of its membership. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Kennedy, Mayor of the city of South Lyon, on behalf of the city council and the entire community, offer congratulations to the South Lyon First United Methodist Church and their membership on providing 190 years of service and leadership since its founding. So congratulations. Pastor, congratulations.
We thank you very much for this proclamation. This opportunity is a blessing to be a congregation that has grown with this city, and we are thankful for our local partnerships, not only with the city, but with groups like Active Faith and Capernaum Health Clinic, and can't wait to see what the next 190 years bring for both of us. So thank you very much.
I'll move on to public comment. If anyone in the audience would wish to speak, we have a two-minute time limit. Come to the microphone there, state your name and address for the record if you would, and feel free to put that microphone there.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Sharon Sauer from Active Faith. Forgot my address. 9792 Ponderosa. It's a new address, South Lyon. So my husband just sent me this morning because I was going to try to convey to you what it's like for us now at the food pantry. It is a different world. I'm going to start off by saying thank you for the CDBG monies. Thank you so much. It's a different world there for us right now. It's not like it used to be. It is so different. So I come home from work and Bill, my husband, sends me this article from the Detroit Free Press, and the title is "Never Seen Anything Like This: Metro Detroit Food Pantry Sees Spike in Need." So that's like what we're going through. I mean normally, like last year and the year before, we were probably six, seven new families a month. We're 18 to 25. So that's kind of what we're facing, and at the same time, we decided to move. So there's a lot of money involved with that. I'm just grateful and want to say thank you. And as Maggie always says, and we do have an outstanding community with a lot of support. I do get nervous, but we are going to make it, and you guys are part of that. So thank you so much, and God bless you all.
Thank you.
Hello, Julie Paquette, 415 South Lafayette with Friends of the Roper Barn. And I just wanted to take up a minute just to report back on our square dance event that we had this weekend. It was a great success. We are just tickled with how things turned out, and we want to thank the community for that. And then I just also wanted to announce our next event for January is a Ukri event at the South Lyon VFW. That's on Friday, January 12th at 7 o'clock. If you check out our social media, you can find the information there to register. And we are still looking for a couple of volunteers, so if anybody's interested in helping out, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Julie? Anyone else? We'll close public comment at this point. I'll move on to a presentation from Pumpkinfest.
Hi, Kathy Swine, Pumpkinfest President, 44 of Waverly, please.
Troy Powell, 29962, Chef Po New Hudson, Vice President.
So we just wanted to come first to say thank you to the city. Can you hear me? First, I'd like to say thank you to the city council, to the city, to all the workers, DPW, to Paul, to the fire department, the police department. We could not do what we do without the support of the city. So first of all, we'd like to thank everybody. I also like to thank personally Lisa. She's our secretary. And Lori, who is not here tonight, she is our treasurer. She has totally stepped into that role. It's, you know, a critical role, more than our role. The money person is, you know, an important person, so she's really helped with that. So we have a little presentation that we wanted to just show you guys.
So this year, we were able to help nonprofits raise $22,640 for themselves. In the times that Kathy, I've been involved with Pumpkinfest for 18 years. Kathy, I think this is your 10th year?
Yep.
So in the 10 years that her and I have been on the board together, we've been able to help over a quarter of a million dollars for the nonprofits to be raised. This is the first time, this year was the first time, we were able to actually save money over the past three years, which a great part of it was because of Lori's support. We were able to give back $20,000 directly to six different organizations, okay?
So we're going to break down that. So the $22,640 is people that, groups that have had booths at Pumpkinfest, like Active Faith and churches.
Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts.
I think the Methodist Church might have had a booth there this year too. So that 22 goes directly back to them working the whole weekend. So in addition, we gave another $20,000 to six groups, deserving groups, starting with $5,000 for the South Lyon Educational Foundation, directed towards another dog for the school system. So, and they were very shocked that mountain. You know, when you go to these groups and you say you're going to give them money, they don't want to get their expectation too high because, you know... So the $5,000, they were very, very pleased to see that.
We also were able to give back a $3,000 donation to the South Lyon Area Youth Assistance for the Shop with the Cop program, which works with the Lyon Township Fire Department, South Lyon Fire Department, Oakland County Sheriff Department, and of course, the South Lyon Police Department. So that was a great donation for them.
And that was one of the people that we gave it to. Again, this one was chief, was, yep. Both chiefs were very pleasantly surprised by this. The first responders memorial, we were able to give them $5,000 to put towards the monument. And without these guys helping us every day through the festival, but especially during the parade, we want to support them.
And next, we were able to give a $3,000 donation to the South Lyon Historical Society Roper Barn Fund, Roper Barn Fund, where Julie's at, so, which, I mean, I don't think you expected a $3,000 donation anytime soon.
Yep, that was something that was on the list. When we come up with, when we sat down to come up with these different groups, there was some right off the top of the bat that we knew we wanted to do, and then we discussed some other ones. So this one is a special one. Some people are going to be like the lacrosse team. And without these boys, first of all, these boys are the most manageable, polite, courteous, hard workers that you've seen on from any team. They arrive Sunday at 5 o'clock, and by 7 o'clock, you don't even know that we had a festival downtown, and it's because of these boys. Every year, for at least the last four years, they've showed up. They are so polite. Their coaches, ma'am, what can we do? Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. So we wanted to give them something. The boys told me that they really thought they were only going to get like $200, and we shocked them really big time.
And blessings for a backpack. We were able to give them a $3,000 donation, which so many of us have been a part of packing bags for them or packing, you know, unloading trucks and things like that. So we were really happy. That was one of those that was just a kind of a given for us to provide.
And she actually told us that day when we gave her the check, she had just ordered a truckload of, another truckload of food. So this was going to go help pay that bill. So they were very grateful. So next year, September 27th, 28th, and 29th, 2024, will be Pumpkinfest time, and we hope everyone will come back, especially the community. The community, we couldn't get them to stay away this weekend. But that's why we were so successful. So we hope to see everybody again next year. Thank you.
That is absolutely wonderful. Anyone have any questions for the Pumpkinfest committee at all?
On the behalf of South Lyon Area Youth Assistants, thank you so much for your contribution. This Wednesday, first responders will be shopping with almost 90 kids.
I was born in the 60s, and it was a rough time for my family, and back then, there was some type of program like that. So I remember what it did to me.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thanks again, Kathy.
I'm really tired. I went to serve, help serve 400 dinners for Kiwanis, so I'm going home now.
Well deserved. Thank you. Moving on to our discussion of downtown with...
The city manager today.
City manager tonight, okay.
Nate informed me that we were notified today that we will be receiving an additional $301,000 from Oakland County. This is for Lafayette Park, so that brings our grand total of over $400,000 that Nate has obtained through grants through Oakland County to help develop that particular park. The social media manager has started posting on various social media channels. In addition to Facebook and Instagram, they've also created accounts and threads on TikTok and Twitter. Not only is she building profiles on various social media channels, she is monitoring what businesses are posting and adding to the stories of the Facebook and Instagram pages. The DDA director has received a lot of positive feedback so far from businesses based upon these posts. The events of December 2nd were very well received in the community, and thank you to everyone that attended any of the many activities that were happening in downtown, as well as through the historic district. The DDA Economic Vitality Committee met last Thursday, December 7th, and began to identify sites within the downtown area that could be targeted for development and redevelopment based on the current master plan. This will be brought to the DDA board at a later date for discussion and ultimate approval at a later DDA meeting. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have or direct them to Nate after this meeting.
Councilmember Dill?
I just was wondering, you might not know this, but I could probably just call Nate, but did the social media person, does she have, I think it was, does she have metrics? Like that she's supposed to get to, or are there any like, I just was, seemed like a lot of money. So I just wondered if there's some metrics that she's supposed to reach.
Well, we did hire a contract for six months, so we're going to be reviewing all the data that's being received based upon the number of posts that have gone out, the responses that we've been getting from the business community, from the residents. So we've kind of developed a lot of different means at which to analyze what she's actually providing the city.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilmember Kurtzweil?
Thank you. I do want to let you know that I've had an opportunity to speak not with businesses in the downtown area, but north of the downtown and south of the downtown. And I just want to let you know, there is much frustration with the school millage coming out in February that will be going after businesses. So I don't know how the DDA feels about it, but these businesses are extremely upset. They're in South Lyon, and additional tax onto their property, non-homesteaded property, is, they think is too much. Is really too much. So wanted to get that across, to let you know about it. I know I can't support it because it affects our businesses, but they're very upset about it. So every commercial business in the school district will be, if the village goes through, will be taxed, so.
Councilmember Kibble?
One thing that I was taking a look at was some of the stuff that was going on our social media. And I think that the stories and the flow of the information is actually really nice. I mean, they're written well, and they tell a story that's real, and they seem like they have a good sense of what people want to see and what information they want to end up disposing of. So I thought that was pretty good. It is an expensive package, but if the reaction is that people are actually incited by going downtown, I think that could end up being a big help, so.
The one point I want to make, Paul, is having $400,000 towards Lafayette Park is absolutely outstanding. So congratulations to Nate and you for that effort. I mean, that's a chunk of change. Obviously, it helped develop that park down there, so congratulations.
Thanks. I'll relate that to Nate, and you'll, if you can see, there's already some equipment that's out there. They've already done some preliminary testing regarding the foundation at the location, some marking of pavement. So you should start to see some of the removal of the old pavement that used to, but the building that was there previously. And then next year, we'll continue more and add more money in the budget, hopefully, to use some of these dollars that are being given to us through the county.
That's great. That's great. Councilmember Kibble?
Have they discerned any kind of understanding of what like soils are?
Yeah, they did a lot of soil borings, but the majority of the work there is actually adding soil to there, so they're not digging down. But there is a lot of peat that is below the area, but there still is the foundations that are around that that is, you know, kind of securing that particular site. But they're not going to be removing things from that particular area, so we're only adding to it, and we're building up. We're going to add the park property, the sidewalks, the gazebos, the trees, all those sort of things, too.
Will it be gravel and things like that to try to fortify it?
Well, there'll be some drainage improvements that will be done, and I think council's been provided a prior plan, and I'll certainly provide additional of those plans again as we start to fine tune those things and we work those dollars into the future budgets to get that work done.
Anyone else? Okay, move on to the fire chief report with Chief Thorington.
Good evening, Mayor, council. We are currently at 1,210 incidents for the year. Like I mentioned last, council meeting, we were at 1,079 last year, so we're well above it. Our burn building, training center down at the water plant is completed. If you saw our pictures on Facebook, but it's a pretty amazing structure now. Our firefighters really are the ones who came together and put hours and hours of labor into it. John Sauvay's vision, his work, physical work and management of the project. Micah De Meyer and Devin Mayer, they're both welders and did a lot of welding for us. Nelson Schilk and Aiden Brown are painters by trade, so they did all the painting in the exterior, which is a pretty serious structure. And then we had a builder, Brian Hayes, who works for us as well, and he did the interior structure for stairs and walls and things like that. So then we had Bob Simmons, Eric Mancha, Luc Sauvay, and several others who did a lot of manual labor. So it's hundreds of hours in that thing, and it's already paid off one time, and we had years of use out of it, so. The new radios were already in effect for the fire department, 800 megahertz state radios. The only glitch right now is township has not gone to the new system yet, so to talk to them, we have to talk to the old radios. There's glitches there, but we'll get through that for this week or so, and they'll come onboard. Our neighboring partner is Green Oak, has a state system as well, so does Salem, so we can talk to them already. So that part of the communication system has been severely, significantly upgraded, so. And then finally, our webpage has been updated and retooled. A little more intuitive is the plan behind it. You can put in for permits, pub ed's, anything at all through the fire department, you smoke detectors, it's on our webpage now, as well as our social media. So take a peek at that, and that's all I have.
Any questions for the chief? Great news. Okay, thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Next, the report from Police Chief Baki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, council. Just got a few things tonight. I just want to touch base with, I know earlier we spoke about our cadet Angela Babe. She has now committed to be a cadet recruit, so she signed the paperwork for that, and she'll be hopefully going to the academy. We're trying to get her in, January is the next day in Oakland, so she's on the track to do that. Our new Tahoe is marked up. It is equipped, and it is now on the road. So Unit 553 was deployed a few days ago, so that is now up and running. And we had four of our officers go to the ASR training, active shooter response training, over at Oakland Police Academy at the Crest Center. So that was mandatory training that we now need to do. All of us have to go through active shooter response through MCOS. So it's mandatory, and we're making sure that all of our officers are doing that training, so. And I would like to also thank Pumpkinfest for their generous donation. I was there when they dropped it off. I was very surprised, pleasantly surprised, and again, thank you. Great job. And I'll take any questions if you have any.
Questions for the chief? You're shitting off easy, chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so tonight, we have a presentation on GASB-75, the actuarial valuation presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I don't have anyone with me tonight. It's just me, but hopefully I can answer any questions that you have. Everyone was provided with the GASB-75 interim actuarial valuation dated 6/30/2023, which was the end of our last fiscal year. So the way GASB's rules are set up, every other year, we'll have a full valuation done, and then the next year, we'll have an interim. So in a sense, what they're doing is they're taking the data that I provided to them as of 6/30/2022, and then using new measurements with updated interest rates and things like that, and presenting us new data for 6/30/2023. So it is a bit confusing because there's no, so any new hire employees that might have come onboard in between that year would not have been added to this, as well as new retirees. So keep that in mind. So you will see that data when we get our next valuation, which will be in June 30th of 2024. But what this presents to us tonight is basically looking at, you know, where our liabilities are at based on our net pension position or net OPEB position. So there was no significant changes to the actuarial assumptions in the current year. We use the same discount and assumption rates as we did the previous year, so they used a discount rate of 7.35% with an inflation assumption of 3%. And then they are still using the current public mortality tables, which came out in 2010. So those have yet to be updated. They're the same ones that MERS use for our pension as well. So as of this report, our net OPEB liability did decrease last year by $53,649. So it is now stands at $397,276. That puts our plan fiduciary net position with an increase of $94,000, and that's due to payments being made as well as contributions. So as you know, each year in our budget planning, council approves a certain dollar amount that we put towards the trust to pay down our liability. And so for the combined of those was $94,000, and then, of course, there was a little bit of interest in there as well. So for last year, our contribution that we made was $72,000, and we made benefit payments of $30,559. And that was for five recipients that are currently receiving funds through that OPEB healthcare payment program. And other highlights, for our current fiscal year, as a reminder, we budgeted that we were going to pay $73,600, so a little bit of an increase, and that payment was made on September 28th of this year. So that we will see that, as you see that as your current financial statements, but you also see that when we have our year-end report done as well. So those are the main points. The other thing I'd like to highlight, that as of the date of this report, we're 42% funded for our plan. So that's above what the state requires, so we are on track. And we keep moving a little bit more every year as we increase that contribution to the trust through our budgeting process. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Jurnan? Councilmember Bogart?
The funded ratio, what's usually an ideal number to have?
Well, the state would like it to be above 40%. So the state's recommendations is that you're at 40%, and then they also would like to see that your overall general fund revenues, that you're, that the amount that you owe in your liability for your OPEB is not more than 12% of your overall general fund revenues. And ours is just under 7% for this year, so we're healthy, meaning the state guidelines.
Any other questions? Thanks, Patricia.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We have no unfinished business this evening, so we'll go on to new business. New business number one, which is replacement of the load brake and meter bay at the wastewater treatment plant. And Mr. Beeson, the Water Sewer Department Superintendent, will be presenting this.
Evening, council. Mr. Mayor. The South Line Wastewater Department is requesting the purchase and installation of a new primary 13-2 load break. It is typically called a primary switch and a meter bay. The current load break malfunctioned during a recent preventive maintenance inspection and has been flagged by DTE. Utilities Instrumentation Service, UIS, has inspected the load break and determined it cannot be repaired due to its age. Dates back to the 80s when the plant was originally built. The equipment is critical and is required to isolate the plant from DTE in emergencies. We've received two bids and are recommending the purchase and installation of the new primary load bank from Double Jack Electric Company in the amount of $36,500. I've had supporting documents attached, the quotes and picture of the present load bank. Possible course of action, approve or not approve the purchase of a new load break and meter bay at the wastewater treatment plant for $36,500 to Double Jack Electric Company, underlying item 592-557-972.
Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the purchase and installation of a new load break at the wastewater plant for $36,500 by Double Jack Electric Company, underlying item 592-557-972.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Hanson?
Just a quick question. What sort of lifetime do these sorts of devices have?
This load break is original, so it's 40 years old. So I hope to see that the new one at least lasts that long.
I take it it's got some sort of warranty, I assume?
Actually, one year.
Oh, so we got 40 out of the last one and?
Yeah, yeah. So they're very dependable. Like I said, this is also, it's a double compartment, so a portion of that is DTEs and then we have the other side, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtzwell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had two questions. That's exactly what I was going to ask you. It's the double load?
So it's a load break primary, PM 123. It's a generic name for a load break. It's a disconnect. So it de-energized our wastewater plant from DTE. So right now, we have no way to disconnect from their power source. We would have to call DTE in an emergency. They would disconnect from the pole.
So half of this is DTE?
When I say that, they, the metering bay is the portion that DTE takes care of. So that is only there for them to meter our electric input. They have to have a way. It's 13,200 volts. Typically, there, you just can't meter that out of a normal meter. So they put, it's the load bay. They put their equipment in there so they can read what we use.
So is that the kind of thing where there's like a rental fee or? Okay, okay.
So there's, we're going to be working with DTE on this. So we have, DTE will be onsite. They'll have three crews. One crew will be to disconnect the overhead wire. There'll be an underground crew and there will also be the metering crew. So they will be there when this is done with the electricians.
And what is your expected time of delivery? Will this last?
This, the delivery date is right now, March, the end of March, early April.
And this will get, it's going to last?
We can't, we can't use it. So in order to disengage or de-energize from DTE, we would call them out.
So they physically have to come out and do it?
They physically have to come out and do that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Bogart?
What was the nature of the malfunction?
It didn't close properly. So this switch, it's like a switch blade. It needs to close instantly and it wouldn't. So in that case, you're dealing with arc flash. So they wouldn't, they walked away from it. So utilities was there to do some preventative maintenance, not only with that, but also with the transformer, which we're going to discuss next. We're doing preventative maintenance on that and that's when it wouldn't close. So once that happened, they wouldn't go near it. We called Edison to finish the preventative maintenance on the transformer.
So to mitigate the switch not closing, was it hardwired in place?
The switch, it's mechanical. So I, we're not allowed to touch it, obviously, with the 13,200 volts. So it's all mechanical and it's supposed to engage and disengage instantly. So you don't have any possibility of arc flash.
I guess what I'm trying to understand is, is how are you getting power if the switch won't close?
So the switchgear is on right now. So we just can't disconnect now. We would have to call DTE.
Okay, so you can't open?
No. And just to be clear, we would normally do that anyway, but utilities or an electrician would do that. We're not supposed to open that door, obviously, because it's, it is dangerous, so.
So along those lines, like there's the transformer and there's the generator. So the purpose of the switch is to disconnect the power so that you can operate the generator without backfeeding DTE's line?
We have internal switch gears. We have smaller switch gears. This one would be if Edison needed to isolate us from an emergency they had or vice versa, that's what it would be used for. So we have other, we call them switch gears inside the building and those are separate from this. So in order to do any maintenance on the transformer, we need this to be operational. As far as the switchgear, we're going through the switchgear for the generator currently. Utilities has been out. We're going, each bank is being reevaluated, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Kibble?
Do you have confidence that the crews from DTE are going to be able to meet our schedules?
So, and that's the good thing. This electric, electrician has worked with DTE on something very similar. They come highly recommended from HRC. They've worked with HRC before. They've worked with DTE. They know the schedule. So I'm really confident these are the people, these are the guys we want to do this. And to bring it all together, we want to make sure that we have the guys that are familiar with the job and the crew.
I think that price point is substantially more to our?
The price point is, and one reason is, when we get to the transformer, this crew is going to do both. So if we can do it at the same time, we save money with DT and DTE, which will be another, they couldn't give me a rough number. They don't know how, but that will be another expense that we can, we will see in the future and that will build separately.
Thank you. I have one follow-up question. When the changeout happens, how will your system be energized?
Our system will be on generators.
Okay.
So once they do this, there may be another cost. I'm looking at having a standby generator to our standby generator. And as we move along, item number three, you'll understand why. So I will probably have one onsite. They think they can get it done in a, it'll be a long day, but they think they can get it done in one day. If something does go wrong, I would love to have a spare generator there just in case. And that would be between $2,000 and $3,000 a day just to have a generator on standby. It'll be onsite, so we won't have to worry about.
Seems prudent to me. Seems prudent to me.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. City Clerk Deaton, will you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Bogart?
Yes.
Dil?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Don't go away. Next item up is the purchase and installation of a new 750 kva transformer.
The South Line Wastewater Treatment Plant needs to replace a 750 kilowatt primary transformer. The current transformer oil reservoir tank is leaking. This oil is critical in cooling the transformer and ultimately will lead to failure. The current transformer is a reconditioned unit with an original production date of 1971. Considering the age and condition of this transformer, a replacement is necessary. We received two bids and recommend that we purchase from Double Jack Electric in the amount of $51,000. I have the supporting documents, quotes for the transformers, and I have the image of the present transformer. Possible course of action, approve or not approve the purchase and installation of the 750 kilowatt transformer for the amount of $51,000 to Double Jack Electric Company, underlying item 592-557-972.
Councilmember Bogart?
I will motion to approve the purchase and replacement of a 750 kilowatt transformer for the amount of $51,000 to Double Jack Electric Company, underlying item 592-557-972.
I'll second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Councilmember Hanson?
Just a quick question. How old is the reconditioned unit that they're going to be giving us?
We don't know.
Okay. Here, I was thinking about it because?
I can, I can suggest that, you know, we want a newer one, but these days, we don't know what we're going to get. We're going to, basically, once it's approved, I'll just be put on a list. It's first come, first served. This could be two weeks out. This could be 20 weeks out.
With being a used item, is there any sort of warranty on that or?
Three years on a used, one year on a new.
Okay.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Bogart, second by Councilmember Hanson. No further discussion. City Clerk Deaton, will you lead us in a roll call vote?
Kibble?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Dil?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Busy night tonight for you, Ron. Next on the agenda is the purchase of a new 750 kilowatt standby commercial generator.
The wastewater department is requesting the purchase of a new 75, or yeah, 750 kilowatt standby diesel generator located at the wastewater treatment plant. This will replace the current 1980 620 kilowatt generator. The current generator is critical to the operation of the wastewater plant during power outages and has been experiencing some mechanical issues in recent years. HRC, along with the department staff, have determined that replacing the current generator is essential to maintain a reliable standby power source. This is a scheduled purchase for this year's budget as a capital improvement. After reviewing the three bids, we recommend the purchase of the generator from Cummins in the amount of $245,050. This is the line item 592-557-972. I have supporting documents, the bid sheet with quotes and a picture of the current generator. Possible courses of action, approve, not approve, and purchase of Cummins DQCB 750 kilowatt commercial diesel generator for $245,050 at a Sourcewell pricing number 110615.
I'll make a motion.
Councilmember Kibble?
Make the motion that we approve the purchase of the Cummins DQCD commercial diesel generator and Sourcewell pricing number 110615, underlying item 592-557-972 to Cummins Sales and Services for 245,050.
I'll support.
A motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Bogart?
In the proposal, I didn't see any discussion about removal of the existing generator.
Good question. We're going to keep our existing generator. It's inside indoors. This new one will be in an enclosure outside. So after a lot of discussion with HRC and staff, we decided to keep this one in place and we can still use it. We'll use both of them. We'll alternate, we run these, this generator every week, every Wednesday under load. So we will alternate this. We could get another six months. We could get another year out of this generator. But I do know that the mechanical issues with it are things that you cannot buy anymore. We've had rebuilt fuel pump. It's leaking and burning oil. And it seems as though we are having more and more issues with our power for a longer period of time. So it's running more often. And I think at this time, this is the best option that we have. In order to get a new one inside the building, we would have to take the wall off in order to get it and take it, take it out in pieces. And I don't know how we'd get a new one back in there.
So is the new generator, is it pretty much turnkey then?
No, this is just for the purchase of the generator. So there'll be other costs. And I think, I think you have a letter from HRC for design costs. And so we'll have the design cost and we'll have to design a pad for it. We'll have to look at electrical engineering and see where we can put it in and run the lines inside the current switchgear.
Thank you. Councilmember Kibble?
The idea of having, first off, I was wondering, do you have any sense of what the scrap value of these things are?
No, I mean, in order, if we could get it out in one piece, it might be worth something. I think getting it out would be the issue. I mean, we would have to essentially either take the roof off, which is a cement type roof, or knock out a wall. Obviously, this is put in.
If it's not functional, I mean, you're obviously, there's no need to have?
There is no need. I would like to keep it as a standby to standby for now.
The only thing that I'm concerned about is the things that are misgivings that it's not reliable now. How much money are we going to spend to make sure that the thing is, is in fit to?
We'll no longer, yeah, we won't, we won't need to maintain that anymore. So it would move to the newer one.
I just don't know why we would end up giving up that space if we've got something that's functioning for us.
I guess the space, it's a tight space to begin with. We wouldn't be giving up any space. We couldn't put the new generator in that present location. It's just not feasible. So we would put it outside. This general?
I don't have a problem with that. I'm just thinking that if we've got a space inside of a structure with an asset that is not necessarily reliable, why couldn't we end up just, even if it was simply for storage or whatever you've got going on in the plant that you're having trouble not keeping in a building? So I just don't get it.
I think the cost to, to remove that and make that space, I think it wouldn't be feasible. It just wouldn't make sense at that point. I just, for that little space, it's not a big area to begin with. And it is, the switch, there's electric equipment in there. You wouldn't want to store much in there. I mean, it's right next to our main switchgear, all of our disconnects.
It's been a long time since I've been in there, so I can't honestly, I don't remember.
You need to come by and take a look at this, yeah. And just see how difficult it would be. And I mean, I invite any of you council members to come out and look at this. It's not very usable, really, where it's at.
I just remember seeing an awful lot of cabinets that looked like they'd been worked over pretty good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Kibble and a second from Councilmember Dilg. City Clerk Deaton, will you lead us in a roll call vote for this?
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dil?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Business item number four, resolution approving city hall as an early voting location for the 2024 elections. the 2024 elections. That's you.
With the approval of proposal twenty-two-dash-zero-two, early voting is now required for all state and federal elections. We're asking to use South Lyon City Hall at three-three-five South Warren as our nine-days early voting site for eight hours each day. So I've included the resolution zero-eight-dash-twenty-three for council to consider approval.
Councilmember Dilg.
I'll move to approve resolution oh-eight-dash-two-three to approve city, I'm sorry, South Lyon City Hall to be used as an early voting site. Second.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Kurtzweil.
Thank you. I want to thank you, Lisa, for keeping the early voting here in the city of South Lyon. As you may know, I'm a little active on the election side and had an opportunity to speak with individuals throughout Oakland County that had early voting in their cities, and some of them were merged areas. They were not happy, and I can understand why. I think we traditionally vote in the community in which we live, and I think there was some hesitancy when voters were being asked on early voting. Well, you go to the town next door, you vote over in their city hall, not in the city hall where you live. I think there were a lot of questions. I do know that there were procedural issues that had not been worked out on the early voting when they were doing it jointly. I think that the residents in our city deserve to be able to vote in their community and not to be shipped to Lyon Township or Milford or someplace else to do their early voting. That's the first argument. The second argument is, nationally, early voting was not that overwhelming to city clerks, which I was a little bit surprised to look at some of the data throughout the country. In Michigan, it was the same way. So even though early voting is available through the proposal, the statute, it was not used. Absentee ballot voting was used, but not the early voting. So it's not like you're going to have an overwhelmed city hall with early voting. So I'm definitely in favor of this, and I want to thank you for keeping voting here in our community for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Dilg, second by Councilmember Kurtzweil. City Clerk Dean, will you lead us in a roll call vote on this one?
Hanson?
Yes.
Kibble?
Yes.
Dilg?
Yes.
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kennedy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Moving along to new business number five, fiscal year 2022 State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program, Local Consent Agreement.
Good evening again. So tonight, I am asking council to consider a fiscal year 2022 State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program, or SLCGP Local Consent Agreement. It would be between us and the state of Michigan. The SLCGP is administered by the Department of Homeland Security and is funded by the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. The state of Michigan was awarded four-point-seven million dollars for the federal fiscal year 2022. The SLCGP is a reimbursable pass-through grant program with an overall goal to improve the cybersecurity of state, local, and territorial governments by providing assistance for managing and reducing systemic cyber risks through the following programs: endpoint detection and response software licenses, cybersecurity assessments, incident response planning and training activities. The city of South Lyon has applied to be an eligible entity with the assistance of our IT consultant firm, BC3. The next step in the award process is to complete the local consent agreement. So I have attached a copy of the agreement for your review, and I'm asking for you to approve or reject the fiscal year 2022 State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Local Consent Agreement. I would like to say, yes, it is 2022 because we're working with federal dollars. They have not appropriated the funds yet for that year, so that's why we're not even looking at the 2023 grant process. Also, with this program, we, there should be no cost to the city. If we do at all, it would be a ten percent match. Most of it will be reimbursable if we are awarded anything, and if we were applying for the 2023, there's more of a match that the city would be responsible for. So I thought, starting out, we would apply for the first grant, see if we're even eligible. They are saying that they are looking to provide the majority of the funding to what they consider rural communities, which would be communities with under fifty thousand people, which we are considered. So our chances are good that we might be considered, and at this point, you know, everybody is kind of in the same point. We've all just done an online application. This is the next step in the process. If this is approved, I'll be submitting it tomorrow, and then we'll wait to hear. Hopefully, they're saying early January to mid-January what the next step will be.
Councilmember Bogart.
I motion to approve the proposed fiscal year 22 State and Local Cybersecurity Grant Program Local Consent Agreement.
My second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Bogart.
As a software developer by trade, I can't emphasize how important it is to have good cybersecurity. There's been a lot of incidents in the news regarding healthcare systems and even casinos that have been brought down by external efforts. So this is very important.
No further discussion. So we have a motion by Councilmember Bogart, second by Councilmember Hanson. City Clerk Dayton, will you lead us in a roll call vote, please?
Dilg?
Yes.
Kurtzweil?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Bogart?
Yes.
Kibble?
Kennedy? Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you. I'm going to stick around.
Next up on the agenda is budget discussion. Do we have any questions regarding the budget for this evening? We'll move on to public comment. Open the floor for public comment. You have a two-minute time limit. Please state your name and address for the city clerk.
Hi again. It's Sharon, nine-seven-nine-two, Ponderosa. I probably could be up here for two hours thanking the community. On behalf of all the nonprofits that operate here in South Lyon, this is the most amazing town. And I, it wasn't that long ago, I met Paul, went to the city hall. We talked about how to connect the city more with what we're doing at Active Faith, and next thing, we're connected with Nate, and before I know it, we're part of the Music in the Park, and we're part of Ladies Night Out, and I just want to say thank you so much for, you know, being and showing up. It's just meant so much to our staff. What we do with the nonprofits, it kind of feels heavy at times, but there's so many fun things that we tie into in this town with Punkin Fest, Punkin Fest Live, and First United Methodist Church, being part of the Cool Yule, and then I see Jeff over here, and Carl and Joanne Foundation, and the Lighting of the Tree, and people like Dana Johnson, and the parade, and it just really lifts our hearts. And I know I speak for everyone in this town that it's the most, it's the best place to live, and we take care of our own here. I just want, I'm sure there's a lot of missing out on, but I just want to say thank you to this wonderful town and to everybody that works here, and to the council, to the community. It's the end of the year, and we're moving on to 2024, and it's going to be great.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close public comment. And we'll move on to the manager's report. City Manager Zelnick.
Few items tonight I want to remind council. Our future agendas will be bringing the senior activity center agreement. That is an agreement between the schools in the city of South Lyon and Lyon Township and Green Oak Township before council, and also the city personnel policy. The Hagadore Sanitary Sewer and Road Paving Project, they finished the paving of the driveways last week and are currently working on the cleanup and lane topsail, gravel, and landscape material on site. The CSX sanitary sewer line, upon inspection and installation of the new sanitary sewer line, they discovered additional wear and tear on an existing sanitary sewer pipe along Pontiac Trail. The engineers have recommended that, since the contractor is out there performing this work currently, that we have them align this additional section of pipe as part of this project. This will add approximately thirty-five thousand dollars to the project. The Westlake Development, that's a property that will be coming, that is off of Dixboro Road, that'll be coming to city council in January also. The three-eighteen Westlake Street property, the builder who was interested in the property at that site has already inspected the sanitary sewer line. We've spoke with them. We've met with them to discuss their plans for the site, and we will be providing a copy of those plans, an agreement, and a resolution before city council in January. Ask city council already regarding the city council budget suggestions. It's that time of the year again. I'm asking for you, you for your information. Please plan on compiling your list and provide me your suggestions, either by email or in person, by January eighth. And the work at Volunteer and Lafayette Park has commenced. The contractor has begun working on both sites. They've installed the new parking lot at Volunteer Park and already begun to grade the new baseball fields or the new fields at that particular site. And I want to remind everyone that the city offices will be closed for the holidays on December twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, and January first and second. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Kurtzweil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to just, you brought up the city council budget suggestions. Here is my dilemma. The dilemma is, we had a water rate increase announced, I think it was at the last meeting, roughly eight percent. We now have the school district going after an additional half mil on non-home-studded property. My problem with the non-home-studded property, and I could be wrong, and I haven't had time to check into this, but I think Colonial Acres is non-home-studded property. They don't have a deed. Usually, your property is home-studded when you transfer a warranty deed. And Colonial Acres, your interest in the real estate or the unit that you live in is through a certificate of membership in whatever co-op or phase you're in. It is not through a warranty deed. So I don't think Colonial Acres is home-studded property, which means Colonial Acres would be subjected to the millage increase that the school district is proposing. So if we look at that demographic, we're looking at an eight percent water increase. We're looking at a possible half mil on non-home-studded property. That includes apartments. And then, if there's going to be an increase in the budget at some point, you know, I'm just letting you know, I'm telegraphing ahead of time, that I will have a very difficult time approving a budget that includes any increase in the mil if the school millage goes through. And that is to show my support for the seniors in Colonial Acres. So I just want to make sure you know that. I don't want any surprises or anything. That's my position on that. This is a very serious mil. It's going to affect a lot of people.
Any else for the city manager? So Paul, you mentioned that, you know, the section of sewer pipe that's deteriorated that they found, and they're going to reline while they're working on it. Is that, am I to understand that we're relining the existing line at this point as opposed to when it was said that that was done previously in a previous meeting? Is that underway right now?
No, they have not started lining that yet, and that's why we're going to be adding this to this particular point. The pipe that they're lining was not inspected, that particular pipe, that's a forced main manhole that's along, that's, you know, before the railroad tracks. The section of pipe that we're lining was not videoed because it would require a major bypass that would, that'd have to be done under the tracks with a new line, which was the main reason for the project. So this is the line, it actually runs between the new manhole that they put in along Pontiac Trail to the other manhole that's right before it went under the railroad tracks on Pontiac Trail. So it's a few hundred-foot section, and I can ask our engineers if they want to speak on that a little bit further in case I didn't eloquently speak enough about what they're actually doing on that site.
That would, that'd be great, because this might be the section that we had repairs to previously, where we did the bypass. It sounds like it's in the same neighborhood there. And also, I'd like to know what the timing is for relining the existing one that we had planned to do in addition to relining this new section.
Yeah, we're talking about starting as early as next week on that lining section and then completing that within a, within a two-week time period.
And, Mr. Mayor, I know you did ask about that last council meeting, and I misspoke.
No problem.
I didn't, I relayed the information improperly. Both the bypass and the existing pipe were up and operational as of last meeting. Now we're about to reline that existing pipe. So as of last meeting, we did have that duplicity. We had that backup where you had both, both pipes were working. And then Mike might be able to speak further about this new section of pipe that during construction was found to be deficient. So Mike, you have...
Sure. So we went and put this new manhole over the existing line, and that line was the one that was taken out previously when they had all the dewatering equipment out there. We were under, everyone was under the impression that that line was all replaced from the forced main manhole all the way to the railroad tracks.
And that was then replaced.
Whenever that repair was made.
Years.
Is that where that spillway is?
Up by Water's Edge, the entrance.
Right.
So everyone thought that that whole line was PVC, and when we put our new manhole in there, contractor's like, oh, this concrete pipe doesn't look like it's in good condition. Like, that should be all PVC. So we looked at it and said, you know, this, we should line all this too. You're just going to have trouble down the road. So our current project was just from the tracks, under the tracks, and then along the track. So our new, since they only get spot repair, it looks like it was only forty feet, not a hundred-and-twenty feet. We're saying to, see, we just line everything we can while these guys are out here. It makes sense because they'll have all the equipment, and it's going to include a bypass while they're doing it. If they don't do it now, you're just going to pay more in the future for future bypass. It just makes sense to do it now.
So just help me understand, how do we redirect the flow to, between one line and the other? How does that take place? If need be. I mean, if we need to move the flow from, let's just say, the new line because we need to do some repair to it, to the old line that's been relined, how do we redirect that flow? How does that process take place?
You'll have, you would plug the new line, and it would go automatically down.
So this is a manual process?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Okay. And we're going to start this and have it completed in the next couple of weeks? I think that's feasible?
Yeah, by the end of the year.
Okay. Any other questions for HRC or the city manager? Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry. I do have a question.
Councilmember Kibble.
The stuff with the cleanup from Hagador, are we going to lean on them to get all those, you know, the iron and all that stuff that's down on Chester and that whole corridor so that it's cleaned before we're buried in snow?
Yes, they're currently working on some of it. They've already removed some of the material, but they're working on restoration. So they've got three different crews that are actually working out there right now.
And to set expectations, there will be work in the spring. They will, they will be coming back and doing touch-up in the spring, so the residents will still see some work come springtime. And that's to be expected this late in the year. They'll have to come back and reseed areas that maybe didn't take and do some work in the spring, so.
Well, I see like where the swells are and things like that, that, you know, there's places that don't have fresh soil and getting it, you know, the nets out there for grass and all that kind of stuff. I'm a lot more concerned about stacks of iron that are around the intersections and that, where somebody slides off into that stuff. Someone's going to get banged up, and we need to put that as a priority, is my feeling. The dirt isn't going to end up going anyplace, so let's get the stuff that could hurt, hurt people out of the way, so no, we don't have to worry about that.
We can relay that.
Okay, thanks a lot. Moving on to council comments. Let's go ahead and start with Councilmember Hanson this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. My family and I enjoyed driving around some of the subdivisions in the city to check out some of the Christmas lights that a lot of the residents have put up. So I'd encourage folks that we've got some great decorated houses in the city that are not a far drive to enjoy some of the holiday spirit. And I would just wish everyone a Happy New Year, a Merry Christmas, and a great holiday season from... great holiday season, from my family to yours. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Dilg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple, congrats and thank yous. I just wanted to say, even though I missed it, it looked amazing on social media, the, everything that happened downtown last weekend. I just want to thank Nate and everybody else who put effort into making that happen, Dana Johnson, Heinonen. Just amazing how much work went into that and how many things were happening downtown. I want to thank Tracy Smith for her work on the DDA. Sorry to see her go and hope we can get another person in there soon. I want to say congrats to First United Methodist Church on their 190 years. That's amazing. Congrats to, I know that I'm on the Pumpkin Fest Committee, but congrats to the Pumpkin Fest Committee. Amazing work to be able to give out $42,000 to local nonprofits is unbelievable. And it was, it was really fun to hear about surprising some of those groups. So, that was great. I want to say congratulations to Julie Paquette and her nonprofit Friends of the Roper Bar for their successful fundraiser. I think it's really great finding creative ways to help fund this bar. And I just wanted to echo what Sharon said, and it is an amazing place to live and play. So, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you. I would also like to congratulate First United Methodist Church, where I have many friends over in that parish. You are a great community. I've enjoyed the friendships over there for many, many years, and couldn't go to a better organization at this time. The giving that you give to the community is very, very commendable, and particularly to the Canizals. I know both of you personally, the amount of time that you have donated to the community over the decades on behalf of the First United Methodist Church is incredible, absolutely incredible. So, thank you, Lynn. Thank you so much for everything you do, and that handsome husband of yours next door. Yeah, I know, but, Ken, I'm talking about you. Also, I wanted to, and I know they're going to be watching this meeting, and what I wanted to do is send a message of support and love to the women that sent me a letter after my vote at the last meeting regarding Haven House. It was a very touching, touching letter. I appreciate it very much, ladies. And I think you need to understand that journeys are what they are, they're journeys. And move forward with your life, move forward. There are many individuals out there that will be with you. I do not know who you are personally. You did not sign your name to the letter. So, I will do what I can to advocate, and I understand that you move quietly in the community to bring attention to domestic and sexual violence. And ladies, just hang in. Life has you for a certain reason. You're strong, and you'll survive. So, Merry Christmas to the ladies that signed the letter to me. Next, I'd like to say Happy Fifth Day of Hanukkah to our friends, neighbors, and business owners here in the city of South Lyon. So, Happy Hanukkah. And last, I would like to also say, please get out and enjoy the holidays here in the city of South Lyon. And one of the subdivisions that is completely lit is Hidden Creek Subdivision. The DTE has been over there working on the transformer, so we are definitely lit, and it's absolutely gorgeous. So, get out. Peace and comfort to everybody. Enjoy your holidays, and we'll see you in 2024.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtzwell. Councilmember Bogart?
I had the opportunity to participate in last weekend's holiday events, and it was amazing to see the turnout, and it was just a lot of fun. I went to the Christmas market. There was a lot of vendors. There was a lot of people shopping. Both tree lightings went on without a hitch. It was good times. So, I'd like to acknowledge everyone that's been involved with, with all of those holiday celebrations. And the only thing I, only other thing I want to say is shop local for the holidays.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kibble?
The only nugget I've got is I've seen the post from Kiwanis for the trees, that they pretty much said, you know, from this point forward, they've got trees setting up there. Someone didn't have the dough to get one earlier, you're welcome to end up putting one into your house and enjoy your own Christmas. So, that's all.
Tonight, I just want to remind everybody about the upcoming ball drop at Heinonen Engineering on December 31st. Starting at 7:00 PM, there'll be entertainment by Power Play Detroit, beverages, all kinds of good times. So, make a point of coming out and watching the ball drop and welcoming the new year. And along those same lines, I just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, a joyous Kwanzaa, or in the words of Jerry Stiller from the Seinfeld Show, and I quote, "A happy Festus for the rest of us." So, with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Kurtzwell.
Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a great holiday, everybody. Thank you.